Hello.
Hey Brian.
Hey.
We're allowed to start here.
Okay, thanks Ed.
Call is made in order for the city councils for the municipal headway to join meeting council chambers ten to be agenda Monday April 14, 2019, 2:30 PM. Obi roll call. Patrick.
Here.
Calva.
Here.
Dolly.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Morgan.
Hey, roll call for utilities, Cropper.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Melvin.
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Okay, made a motion approved agenda. So move. Michael Patrick.
Second.
Calva. Patrick.
Yes.
Calva. Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Okay. Number two, headhunter services for future open positions. And this will have to be just short because we've got just a half hour.
Oh, no, no problems.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm just, you probably have all seen it. So I, I kind of go over or I can just open it up for questions if you, if you would like. And then the other conversation that I thought we were going to potentially explore is sort of organizational review services and things like that. And we're, I'm happy to answer questions about that as well.
I think that was, one question I had is, do you offer those services where you can come in and you take a look at an organization, you can make recommendations on efficiency, stuff like that? That's something you guys, you would do?
Yes, yes, and I actually, I asked my colleague, Janay Jess, on those types of projects. She joins me on those. She, both of us are HR credential professionals and with, and she's also like, just a fantastic financial whiz. And so we kind of combine those talents to do those types of projects. And we've done those types of projects for Centerville and Wester City and some other communities. And be happy to connect you with the people in those communities as well.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, if that is something that you're interested in, I'd be happy to develop a proposal for you, based on what your needs are and I can reach out to, I don't know who the appropriate contact would be, if that's Sarah, or Ash, or whomever, to get a little more information about that, so that I could put together an appropriate proposal for you.
Okay, okay, okay. Yes, good. This, the fee that you have on here. So, let's say you find somebody, they don't work out, okay. Do we get charged another fee for, to find somebody else?
And when you say they don't work out, meaning?
They get hired, but then they, yeah, they get hired and then they leave.
Within what period of time?
Just thirty days.
Oh, okay.
Ninety days, let's say ninety days.
Okay. So basically, what you would want to write into the contract is a ninety day guarantee.
Okay.
So that if that were to happen, then it would, you would not be charged an additional fee.
Okay, but you would, you'd go on to like, the next person will find somebody else for us.
Does your fee only start when you find somebody, or while the process is going?
No, typically, we'll bill at different segments of the process. So when's that first piece? Like after the stakeholder interviews are done and the ads are out, that would be the first billing. And then the second one might be after everything's finished and you pass someone on board.
Yeah, okay. Well, I think, anybody else have any more questions for us? I think if you'll send a proposal to Sarah and Ash.
Sure, sure.
What's your, what's your search area, like, for, like a small town like this? I mean, are you looking much further than like a state away type of thing, or just on the interstate?
No, it depends on the search, but if you're having trouble finding people, you know, you, you could certainly post it to the national, there's a National Health Works Association, you could go that route as well. We have recently, on the city manager's side of things, brought in some really good candidates from some other states, people looking to relocate to Iowa. So there, there's something that makes me believe that there wouldn't be lots of candidates out there who might want to relocate to Iowa for a position like this as well.
And you, like, handle the creation of like relocation fees and?
Within the guidance set by the utility commissioner, the council. What happens typically is, we would have a session where we would hash all of that out and you would give me parameters, negotiation parameters in advance, and then I would talk with the, the preferred candidate and do those negotiations.
I guess maybe for you guys, what have been the biggest obstacles in, in trying to recruit in the past? Is it that we have someone that we're trying to replace that's like a jack of all trades and it's hard to find someone with all of the skills? Or is this, we can't, we don't get very reach with our advertising, or?
No, I think we, we do okay on, until you start to get that sewer grates and all the stuff, well, you have difficulties finding people. So more into that, being most licensed and all that stuff. That's where we have a problem. But for the majority of the hiring, we don't have each one.
The other thing with a particular licensure, like it would be needed to run a wastewater treatment plant, or a water treatment plant, it might be possible, if you had a candidate who hadn't quite achieved all of those licensures yet, that you wanted to invest in and mentor, you could, there are companies out there who will provide those licensed services, like for the interim, until that person is trained up and has the appropriate licensure. And that could be another opportunity as well, if you're having trouble finding someone with the appropriate licensure.
And Neil, I think, between the utilities and the city, we had to bump up the wages to get employees coming in here.
Right.
It is a benefit not to have to pay any health insurance, that's one force we have.
Yeah, that's a huge benefit, sure. With regard to the organizational piece, what is it that you're looking for in that regard?
Suggestions where we can streamline our operations, maybe move more stuff online, I don't know if we can get cross-training, that type of stuff.
Perfect.
Pretty much similar to what a lot of the big private organizations do. They go in and see how we can streamline it, make it more efficient at that point, you know?
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I think for somebody that we're looking for, I think they're gonna far few in between. I think this is a difficult position to fill, and I think that's why, in my opinion, we're kind of reaching out and asking for that help, just because not, there's not that many people out there with license. And somebody did mention, I think it was Jim that mentioned that there is several wastewater operators with that kind of license, is gonna be retiring or leaving within southwest Iowa as well. So, we're gonna be competing for that, that certain someone, so I think that's why we're kind of reaching out and looking for help.
It's an extremely competitive position. Waste water and water right now in Iowa, that goes, yeah. We actually, you know, we've had, we've put a, like an internship program in place where we will hire part-time somebody who's in the water treatment program at DNEB, and mentor them through and help support them in that. And then when they graduate, they become, you know, they then become a full-time employee and we transition them into the organization that way, because we've had the same types of challenges. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, V, people service.
I'm Chris McMillan, people service, and I am probably your last resort. If you can't find anybody, we're contract operations. So the misnomer is, we're not here to displace anyone. Obviously, if you can't find that grade three, and that's absolutely very difficult on a national level too. Those, those two top licenses, they can kind of punch their own ticket. So the way it works with us is that, you know, you call us, if you can't find the people, you can't keep people, whatever your pain point is, or if you're forethinking, then you would hire us. If there's an existing staff, we would want to interview them, because we hire locally. We just did, in Oklahoma, Nebraska, we hired their entire staff, you know, and we work with them individually, with HR, benefits, and all that stuff with them. So, it's not their decision that the city decided to outsource it, so we're not penalizing them. And then, we, as what she said, we try to find the talent. With people service, we have threes and fours on staff. So, if you found somebody that's a grade two that has experience, that could test in a year, we put them in place, and at the time of whenever we do a contract, if we have a three or a four open, they can provide oversight and keep them compliant. So, with that, the regulation is you can only have one under your name, so, you know, there's a lot of requirements to be present, and the DNR is pretty strict on that, so that's kind of how we are. I mean, the process, just to be upfront with you, if he's retiring in January, it's probably a hundred and twenty days prior, because if you want us to try to interview during a holiday, it's a difficult thing. The benefit with us is that you gain a partner, I mean, this is what we do. So, you work with your engineers, the capital improvement, or, you know, our, we're a for-profit business, so obviously we'll want to keep your business and exceed expectations. For us to do that, we have to be transparent, do what we say we're gonna do. And provides you the transparency of what we're doing for maintenance, and, you know, our structure comes in. So if you had existing staff, the only thing different would be they drive people service truck and they have a people service shirt. So, if you can't find the people, if you can't find a grade three, I mean, that's how you do it. Try to find an affidavit operator, potentially, if somebody's close, that's retiring, that's an option, but it's hard, even this business we're in, and you have to poach someone, and depending on, I mean, I, we lost somebody who's getting paid forty bucks an hour in the waterloo area, which is insane for a grade three. What are you gonna do? So, so, you know, if it's something you want to investigate, the process we have to walk through, we understand the sensitivity, if there's staff involved, we would, you know, we're not here to displace anyone, so we would work together, work with them, figure out the number of staff it takes, and then provide a proposal. The second challenge that we have is, we provide you one number, so that's a big number, but when you break down your fifteen line items of your budget, we're pretty competitive, so that's the challenge for the residents, same way we're paying people service X amount, it gets, it's, you know, we're very competitive. For a grade three, we're probably gonna save you a little bit of money every event. And then when there's elections, it's re-educating the new council members, if there are any that, hey, you know, it might be a big number, but it represents a lot of line items. Those are the only two challenges. And then, perception is the control, obviously. Everything's under contract, and if you're not happy, you don't redo, so that's the most control you can have. So, happy to answer any questions you have?
No questions?
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. All in the group?
Hi Amy. How are you?
Good.
Good. Well, thank you so very much for having us. We have worked with several local city organizations in the past, I've worked with several, and David, of course, would work with this particular role. So I'm kind of here to share a little bit just about our agreements in general. We do have a couple of options, most of our city organizations get a lower than standard fee. In addition, we do have a guarantee, so you're kind of asking if, you know, somebody doesn't work out, or, you know, what, what happens then? We also do a couple of options, so a ninety day guarantee, or a one hundred and eighty day guarantee. And what that means is, if anything were to happen in that timeframe, pretty much anything other than, oh, we just decided we don't need that position anymore. So, if they leave, if you decide this isn't quite the right fit that we're looking for, we will do a one-time free replacement, or a pro-rated refund. So whatever, you know, you decide works best at the time, those are the two options, so ninety day or one hundred and eighty day guarantee. And then, did you have anything to add specifically about this particular position?
Yeah, thank you. Just so you guys know, Amanda's on our administrative, administration team, she's a senior kind of executive, so she's doing a lot longer than me. And so I thought it'd be good to bring her on to show you, we have other areas to focus on as well. But in this particular position, I've already done some research and some networking on this position, I've actually learned quite a bit about it. Some of the things we've already heard are true, it's general consensus, I think you guys understand that. But, in this case, with this position, you know, it's a, it is unique, and you're right, it is gonna be a challenge finding the right person for this position, just because of the fact that you're not just running the wastewater plant, but you're also for the city, and you're doing other things, and representing the city. And so there's other things we need to look for too, as we sell this position to candidates, one's gonna be the community and the growth that we see in here, okay? And it's gonna continue to happen, that's what I suspect, just like we're seeing, Winter said, I suspect we'll see that here as well. So, we are selling, and this is gonna be beyond just a position itself, right? We're looking for someone who wants to be here long-term, right? And someone who wants to continually work towards advancing those certifications. The concern that we're gonna have going into this is finding the right person. And I don't mean necessarily certification level, I mean culturally, is this person gonna come in, gonna be leading, running the ship, gonna be in charge of some people, right? So they're gonna have some responsibilities there. Are they gonna train and develop those people to take over at some point, I would suspect, right? So that when that person's not here, the lead person, somebody else can step in, whether it's an emergency situation. So we're looking for somebody long-term. Is my, my, I'll look at you.
Do you have any questions, Brad?
Blue video has the conversation.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
A question for all three of us is, if you were just looking for, if you were splitting these positions and saying you were just looking for a streets person, or just looking for someone of, you know, with grade three for the other, other piece of the job, how much, how much easier is it to find those individuals, and how much harder is it to find someone with that combined piece? I guess, question for all of you. Like, is there restructuring that we should be thinking about in order to find better candidates?
Mike, I would say that the grade three is more difficult to find, is the most difficult to find, if you were just looking for somebody who was just doing streets, who was just a street superintendent. I don't want to say just a street superintendent, because that's a very important position, but who didn't have that additional responsibility, that would be easier. It's the grade, it's the, the treatment that is, that's a challenge right now. That makes it the most challenging right now.
So looking for somebody who's motivated to get that, right? Somebody who's at a location that maybe there is a grade three, and they don't have that ability to move up, there's, that person, that role's filled, right? So we're looking for somebody who's got some ambition, who wants to get to that next level, and this is that opportunity.
I think that'll provide some loyalty too, right? If they know that you're going to help them, they want to stick around, they want to do the best that they can as well, so it's definitely a good option if that's possible. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Yeah, one more. Audio, video, oven ready.
Yes. Sarah has done a great job, and we have big copies to give to look at the first page, it's pretty much summarized Sarah's work, and if we have any questions, we'd like to answer. No, I think after Sarah's research, she is recommending Iowa audio review.
Yeah, I was given the short time I had to look over, I was looking at that one myself.
Need a motion on it?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to accept the Iowa audio video.
Second, second, my Calva. I think about Patrick.
Yes.
Calva.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Yes. I know, Cropper.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Hold on, hold on, yes, going, going back to the first, I mean, what was, what is the resolution, the next steps?
That's, I, I agree with mine, I know we had acquired homework on, on a basis, I think the last meeting we had was that we'd go about three months and see what's, and then we wanted to bring everybody in, because we didn't have the other, other people in here to present to both, both places.
So, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I know I'm remote, I don't mean to interject here, but there's two questions. Isn't there only one consultant that's on the agenda that hires for municipalities?
Perhaps Neil fit today, tonight.
Right, but, no, but hires for municipalities exclusively, isn't there only one? Yes, or no?
I don't know. Specializes in that. You read through the whole pamphlet, she specializes in utilities, the others?
Okay, so that's the first question. The answer to that is yes. The second one is, what's the cost? Isn't the cost less?
Ten thousand five hundred, and the others nineteen thousand.
Okay, I know the utilities has no interest in this at all right now from a hiring perspective, but from a, from a specialty perspective, I guess we left it that we were gonna partner on this, in the event that we had somebody open like we did before, marketability makes the most sense, from my perspective as a utility board member. And that's, I guess, that's all I wanted to interject there before we wrapped up. I'm, I mean, that's just my perspective, I don't know if anybody else shared one I didn't hear on those people or not.
But I think, Brian, she's gonna send a proposal to Sarah and Ash.
Okay.
Well, for future hires, are we contracting with these people on a, on a, on an employee-by-employee basis, or position-by-position basis? So, we might use one for one, and then, I mean, we're not, we're not contracting ourselves to have a five-year contract with them, say, all hiring in the future is with you right now.
No. I think the goal would be that we find one that would work.
Right, absolutely.
We wanted to get them in front of the utility board also, so you guys could kind of say, hey, you know, maybe this one, I don't know if we did that, so. We didn't have like, the city doing one, the utility board, and the others, that type of thing.
Exactly, there you go. Yeah.
Five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Utility.
I'll be asleep by then.
Did you get a muffin sometimes?
I did.
I said it has to be you. I said it has to be you.
I don't know why he asked one, he can't read anyone.
Description was that.
I mean, it took a while, we had, we had five, it's like all our, we have John, we have Josh, we have, we have four.
Is that true?
Just like you said.
Get my phone.
Got it, got it.
At least I watched. But. You did? Yeah. I know you did. Most people do.
Came back and put you on the table. Put a broom up there. At least not later. Oh, yeah, hot.
Oh, you, Mrs. Sherman?
Oh. I make it a habit, we never get to talk here. Obi, got it.
Okay.
We're sitting here.
Nope.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just like church.
That's right.
We have only three minutes to go, and we'll start on the soundings, so don't sit in fronters.
Only place to, that's why we're here.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's your birthday party, yeah. Call is made in order, Stewart City Council, ten and
Stewart City Council tenanted agenda Monday, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, sixteen council chambers. Call to order.
Patrick.
Here.
Kava.
Here.
Dolly.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Morgan. Agenda approval, consent agenda approval, minutes of three ten, two thousand twenty-five, and special meetings of three twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, and special meeting of three twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five. Approval of financial statement as of three thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Approval of bills as presented, approval of liquor license, bill of duty.
Motion.
I'll second.
Second. Patrick.
Yes.
Kava.
Yes.
Dolly.
Same.
Yes.
I am moving sixteen up to first. So, utility board appointment. I've got three applications, Andrew Horton, Charles Harris, and John DeBronson. Kim Abey. Personally said she likes Andrew Horton at this point. I want to appoint Andrew Horton. Council approval.
How many motion do you have?
Bills.
I'll second.
Second. How do you go?
Patrick. Yes.
Kava.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Okay, for Cubs Cup, Horse Cup fundraising, sport complex is Rick here.
Yes.
And Stacy.
And Stacy, yes.
So, basically, we're just looking to sell concessions at the soccer rec fields. It's a fundraiser for the Cubs Cup, so we can do summer camps, all the other various activities that we do throughout the year. Popcorn sales for the last few years has been a little on the slim side, so we're just looking for a nice, easy, I would say easy, but another nice way to get some funds split up. We had been doing sales at the soccer, the high school soccer fields, and they've been doing fairly well, so we're hoping to expand as I'm sure some of you have been out there on a nice cold windy day thinking, "Ah, should be nice to have something to snack on or drink or something," so we're just hoping to fulfill that.
Are you gonna just have tables, Rick and Stacy, or are you gonna try to work out the concession building?
We're gonna, yeah, just bring our own stuff.
Okay.
Um, just because it's, for those little guys, it's just such a long walk for them to get to the concession stand for some of those fields.
We, yeah, we like to set up tables like closer to the field, so it's a little bit more convenient. We tend to give more sales that way.
Right now, the biggest majority of the little kids are on the old football field. I'm in the process, I de-headed four drums and the high school kids are gonna paint them, so hopefully, twenty, after twenty-eight, we'll have four more drums out to the football field for trash.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I think if there was a building that they could use, I mean, it's available, right? Because I think with forty mile an hour winds, you guys might want to consider.
Yeah.
Time, yeah.
Yeah, because it was nice when we were able to use the actual concession out at the high school
Sure.
um, on Saturday when it was extremely windy. So, yeah, no, it, I mean, it would be nice, I guess, to experience.
It's an option.
Wouldn't they just come up to the insurance center or if they wanted to use the concession stand, like it's ringing or, you know, it's blowing or whatever? Exactly, they just come up here and grab the key or something?
protective.
The bar boss does have.
Dick, I want to make one recommendation. Jim and I were talking about this, and we suggested, we don't, it's okay, they sell their candy bars, their chips, their anything that's pre-wrapped, pre-wrapped, any kind of Gatorade, pop, anything, but any other kind of food, like hot dogs, nachos, anything that's processed, they need to have their inspection. And we were just talking casually back here about it. And if they want on the concession stand, Stacy can contact me, I'll let her know. I'm on there too.
Like hot dogs and stuff? We're not planning on it right now.
Okay. But that's just. Good thought, so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll keep that in mind.
Okay.
Could have a motion.
Second. How do you go?
Patrick. Yes.
Kava.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Same.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Hello.
Hi.
I couldn't be here, so you guys saw with Jimmy and I, sorry. But I did speak with Mike today, he said you all have a packet of the layout of the plans. Jean Haldason, you need to come up here too. Well, Chuck's not here, right? No.
I think Chuck was gonna do, he thought it was next month.
Oh.
I just talked to him tonight, and he thought it was next month.
Okay, well, here we go. Chuck's on board, just so you guys know. Jean's part of the Legion as well. So, the plans that are in there are how they're laid out. Jimmy and Mike have been to the cemetery. The plots are owned by the Legion. What we'd like to do is replace the wooden structure that is there now with the structure that you see in front of you. Yes, that is our goal, we're shooting for. It depends on how much money we raise. It may change a little bit, so we'll come back and talk to you if that happens. We're not asking for any money from the city right now, we're just asking for approval to do it, because after it is completed, then the insurance has to be carried by the city is what I'm told, because it is the cemetery.
It's a city-owned cemetery.
Yeah, I recommend.
And being, you know, the cemetery liaison, they've kept me in the loop on that. It's a, a, just a nice improvement, not only for the city, but for the veterans to, to give them the honor that they deserve, so.
And there could be lots of names on there, so we're talking about like my generation and the two generations under us.
It's gonna survive a lot of people here, you know, it's not just gonna be, you know, "Well, we put it up there and now it's all filled up again."
Yeah.
It's gonna last for a long time.
Lots and lots of names. I can't tell you exactly how many names, because it all depends on how many sections we can put on each block that, each, each section of grant that we're getting, so.
And I know they're, they're reaching out and doing some grants and stuff.
Correct.
Uh, you know, they haven't asked for any money, but I, I would hope as a city, if it comes to that, that we could stand behind them and support it. At some point, you know, we don't need time bomb right now, but.
Yeah, I just, my condition is just keeping forward when it gets to.
Absolutely.
My man.
Sure.
Yeah.
So I'll be able to be rebuilt.
Right. We're just kind of here in a, getting the approval, so we can move forward with putting out some community and advertising and to be able to move forward with progress.
Need a motion by Kava?
I'll second.
I'll move, move in second. How do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Kava.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, six, two, four, five, six.
Oh. All right, uh, well, as you know, I'm Steve Marks, and I've been on fire department for thirteen years. Just recently elected as the fire chief for twenty twenty-five. And your councilback, let's see, I should have a piece of paper with the word twenty twenty-five. Uh, super fire works, we just want your approval to move forward.
First name on there, she thinks that's. I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll second.
Second, how do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Kava.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Good, thank you. Thanks, appreciate it.
Seven, maintenance, project, one, three, four, eight eighteen, no, five, Steve James, Greg Irving.
All right. Thanks for watching. Couple minutes here to talk tonight. Over the last month, each one of the council members who came up and walked through the property, not seen, and I want to thank you guys for your time, I know you're busy. So, really just curious what, what the council thought and what you guys' direction is moving forward, you know. We have our thoughts, but I, you know, that's kind of selfish on my part, no different than anybody else, so I just want to make sure everyone is on the same page here. That I showed you everything you like to see done and some that have really needs to be done for safety purposes.
Yeah, my, my thoughts on it is, I went out there and looked at it and, um, I think I'd have a different opinion if there was a way to develop or put that street through. But right now, we're spending money sending people out there to maintain it, and we could get that, if we were to sell it, we could be getting money in return versus spending money. And again, it'd be totally different if we knew or I knew that we potentially would own that, uh, north end of the Fremont, Fremont Street.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, and I, and I get the whole not giving up property, not vacating alleys and streets, I, I get that point, but there's always weird situations. But, that's just my opinion. And if we, if I knew we could maintain it really well, I filed that too. That was where I was.
There's, there's only a possibility of maybe one house being built back there. And I've built four or five hundred houses back in, and they can only tuck it up. And I don't think that you're gonna want to spend money on a paved street to go back in there for one house. That'd be a lot of money. Plus, there's two sewer lines and sewers, so. Greg made a great offer, I think, to you, Dolly. Greg said that if you would allow him to have his half of that street, that he would maintain the whole thing for two years. So, I thought that was pretty good. That land's worth absolutely nothing to do anything with. I want to make sure that the council understand, our plan would not be to develop that land, put any buildings on it above the green space. I just don't like that to keep on coming back to the city council meeting and we're just kind of kicking the can back and forth. So, that's why we're here tonight, just kind of put this thing to rest, whatever you guys decide, you know, you guys are the council. Just tried to come up with an option that we can live with as well as the city and the people of the city. I think I heard in a previous council meeting that sometimes those things need to be handled on a case-to-case basis. You can't take a white brush and just paint the whole thing and say, "Well, this is the way we're gonna stand." It's my understanding that the other streets have been, or alleys and streets have been vacated. And that's not, that's not necessarily a reason to do this, you know. Things change, times change, ideas change. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we love living in a city, absolutely love, don't claim I'm going anywhere. But, I'd like to be able to keep my place clean and neat, and I don't want to have to depend on somebody else that has the same idea that I do. If you guys could decide, think about it inside way, possibly given, you know, Greg hits hitting the street and stuff. Because of the sewer line stuff, I wouldn't want to touch it, Mike. Yeah, but, uh, right now, I just want to see the trees cut down. Whatever Greg needs to be done on his end, I think I said four trees on my side, possibly, possibly five, if you want to do it. Then the lot cleaned up, leaves, and then moved, moved once to twice. Once every other week. Last time, they didn't, they only moved up three times and then showed, last time they showed up, it's all, so. I want to see it moved, moved down like it's supposed to be.
That, that isn't true. We talked with Jai's October's last time, he has records.
He might talk.
He's got records.
Come on, let's try.
Let's, I'm not trying to get in a diss match here.
I'm not here to argue. So, so, just a question for, I should, whoever, when we vacate a street, we don't just give property away. We'd have to sell it. Yeah, you could add, there is a loss, legal loss. Right, but in, for the benefit of the city, because that's what we'd have to do it for, we'd have to re, get some sort of money for that property, wouldn't we? Yeah. And we couldn't vacate half a street for like you, Mr. Irving, and then keep half the street. But, wait, wait, I don't know, that's what I'm asking. If I could say, maybe not this council, but somebody's already vacated half that street from Division up to Fremont. Right, it is already vacated. I, I guess I'm looking at a street as a whole block is what, but I get what you're saying. Yeah. So, uh, something like that. And I'm, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence, because I, I, I was thinking like, uh, Mr. Dolly was, is like, you know, if here we got a situation, yeah, is it possible that it could be developed? It is possible. Is it probable? Probably not, you know. It just, the way that land lays out there, I don't know. I know, I have been on the receiving end of people telling us, "Don't vacate streets," you know, quite a few times up here, and I don't like to do it. But as he said, it's a case by case. No, I know. I mean, there's been streets vacated on the west side that would run right to a new housing development, very easily flat land, farmland, and they, they vacated that street. We were talking about a street that, that I'd bet my life that we never, anything put on it. The land is just not feasible for it. And I understand, I'm just saying, this is what I got out of the meeting, okay, is trying to find a solution, uh, so we don't have this month after month after month, you know. And I, I don't know what the right solution is. If I could ask something? Yeah. Do you think that's a good use of taxation money to have somebody continue to come up there and maintain it? Because from a few of the council members, I don't think they even knew where the property was, and until a few years back, didn't even know that it was actually a street. Yeah, I would never have known it was a street. Yeah, exactly.
I found that out.
So, that's where we're at, with it. I, like I said, I'm not up here to argue or try to call anybody out, everybody's got their side of that story. I, I'm just trying to find a solution. Sure. So that we don't have to keep on kicking this can back and forth. So, if we vacated half of that street in a year and a half, it would have to follow the process like when we, uh, put up, uh, uh, what's his face over there by the railroad track? So, that would mean. Yeah, it is have a property owned by the city, has a, which was any of us. So, we, we, we have to say, oh, so, you know, uh, on that, but then we have year and a half that would still be. Not by. Yeah. Well, not with, not with the sewer lines down. City, city-owned, you know, uh, which would still be subject to maintenance by the city on there. Could, could we, like, carry that as far as selling him, selling him that and just get on with the pro- The whole prop, the whole. The project of getting the place cleaned up like it should be? And then work on that later? Because regardless whether Greg takes that or not, I think you guys would be required to cut the trees down and then cut down and clean it up.
Is there a lot of dead trees on there?
Uh, there's one cord down there, the whole inside of the tree is rotted out. I don't know why it's staying. There's one in the middle that it'll have, it's got some green leaves on it, but there's dying branches. And the other one's hanging over my propane barrel, and my barrel was there first. And it, one of the limb that I look at, it comes down, is gonna cause some, who knows, it's gonna be that barrel in my blow up. And there's right, and there's holes that big in the, in the branches, so water's going in there and they're gonna come down. And, uh, there's one other one that's just straight up with nothing on it, it's dead. But as far as the west end, Jim's crew was out, I think some before last or maybe early last spring, took down two trees. There's not any dead trees in there. Those trees are just fine. They're not real beautiful trees or not, you know, uh, probably need to be pruned up some, but, you know, they're fine where they're at. They do drop a lot of limbs, and so constantly, you know, uh, and, and I was asked not to go on the property and, you know, for liability reasons, I totally understand that. That's not the question. But the question is, okay, when does it become an eyesore to me as a resident that pays taxes on, on my property? And, and try to do my part. Uh, I, I don't know where to draw that line.
Jim, I got a question for you.
Yes.
North Fremont, where his house is, the lands and the other guys, that was basically shrubbery and trees till a few years ago, you cleaned that street up, right?
That's correct.
We're gonna take into consideration where that true street is on the, on the north side
Yeah.
of where Mr. James lives. There's utilities that go through there as well, so there's.
And the pre- Just to make sure everybody understands Fremont and Knight Street would never match up because Mr. Edward's own set.
There's not a twenty-foot corner here.
Yeah, yeah, they can move. Yeah, and if anybody would like to add on the map. You know, I think we've talked about that. We can talk all night long and take up everybody's time. But let me ask you this. I hate to say let's put it off till next month, but I'd like you guys to think about it and let's just plan on it. Next time we come here next month, there's a decision made, whatever the decision is, so we can all move on. I don't like the frustration anymore. You guys, you take my time. And, and the unfortunate thing is, this is our only venue to be able to do that, you know, is that council meeting, because we can't sit and discuss this business outside of this. Yeah. So I know, uh, Mr. Doley and myself, you know, every, you know, there's, there's, there's always exceptions to doing stuff, you know, and, uh, I, I, I kinda know where I'm leaning on it, you know? If we could, you know, if you, if you took over half of it, you know, we'd have to sell it, of course.
Would you be interested in the whole thing?
So I checked with the utility commission for the state of Iowa. Even though they made it, made a, a statement to me to get them to put in writing to something else. What they're saying is, is that from the lot line where it comes on, so just, say for instance, with Steve James' house, where the stop box on in is Steve's responsibility on a sewer, from the stop box at the street on out. Well, you can't expect Dale and Kathy Grunmeyer and Christie and I to be responsible for a hundred and fifty foot or two hundred foot run. And, and, you know, possibly at some point put concrete over the top of it and we're responsible for that? Sorry, I, I, I don't see that. I, I would think that would end up in a lawsuit someplace because how would they ever get to my private sewer line? I, I wasn't here when they put it in. I don't know how that happened. And I think that's a question, but it, it's already happened, so all we can do is move forward. I would be gl- I would be more than happy to maintain it for two years. So the way I look at that is, I'll buy the lot on the west end, I'll sign a contract with you guys, I'll keep it cleaned up. You know, as far as mowed, I'm not gonna cut down trees. And, and I'll keep that mowed for two years, and you're gonna be saving the taxation money for two years. If that works with you, great. If it doesn't, that's fine too. And you've also, also, uh, if you wanna look back, say, about ten to twelve years of mowing by me doing it. And I cleaned that the street on top of that. So there's a lot of money saved. Plus, in order to get to do that, I had to hire a lawyer because the city council, Ash should remember that's no vague of city code, right? Uh, taking the animals out of that street, so that cost me six, seven, so I got, I got several thousand dollars in. Plus, I used, when I used to mow it, I decided I'd go a little bit further back on Greg's deal. And the reason I like trees and stubs ground is I took out my deck on my mower. And, and I think that's very, that's all things that were in the past or really can't do much about. Let's just try to stick with the present. You guys willing to, to move on it tonight? Let's, uh, no, Jim can't stand up, Mr. Irving. I didn't know if you saw that, so.
Jim, the only thing you're worried about putting concrete over those sewer lines, chances are if that was to be developed as a street, it would have sanitary sewer developed at the same time. So there would be a sewer main put down that street at the same time. Those lines would be attached to that sewer at that given time. My recommendation would be for that property is to continue to maintain it, mow it and trim it at the same interval that the rest of the city properties mow. If we're gonna have to go mow half of it, we just as well mow it all. My take on it.
Okay, like I said, I'm about to get it cleaned up right now and get the trees cut down. Will you guys do that for us? I mean, we showed you the trees. Doley, you seen them, unless you seen them. Was I, um, you know, asked her too much if I had four trees cut down? And you know what? When you think back, take, that, that thing back, you're saving money there. Because I think the year before last, it was mowed, but there was grass going on all over the trees. So I was told he wasn't hired to trim. Well, when you maintain something, you should trim and check. So I just wanna clean that up. And like I said, that tree angle of my Astro is a damage. The other ones that fall down as long as the guy that's mowing it, as a drag, the limbs over and throw it on Mrs. Jones' property, like she did, uh, last year. She don't need that.
I think I'm gonna be in a agreeance with Mr. Irving. I, I think, um, I do appreciate you. Uh, no, I don't wanna keep kicking this can down the road by no means, but I think, uh, in my opinion, circle back another month or whatever, let's reevaluate. I wanna give a Jim, or a couple of us give a Jim, talk to him, what goes on up there. I also, uh, take Jim's, uh, perspective on this very serious as well. Like, uh, converse with him a little bit, maybe we'll just circle back. Um, you guys aren't going unnoticed here by no means. I'm not trying to push you guys off by no means, so, um, I think we just need to regroup again, talk this over, then next, next month, we can just put it to rest and we'll have a decision.
Thanks, we're, appreciate it.
For everybody else.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The next one.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Okay, A, hearing from reasons, finally, that B, you got a little more to talk on? And now, here, um, we do have our code enforcement guy here.
So, um, well, thank you for that, to be heard. And, um, I think you saw my appeal that one of the, um, I wanted to, that there was some extenuating circumstances that kind of played into the situation this year. One of them being that I fell with a light bulb in my hand and broke my wrist, um, September twenty-second. So I was not able to complete, that was the way I would have liked to, um, before winter. I wasn't really through therapy until right at Christmas. And then the same week that I got the second, or I got the first notice, it was the same week that, um, I was pulled out balance and I did a face plant skid on some cement. Um, re-injuring my hands, air, and my face. So again, that kind of put a little bit of a damper on doing some outside things. Um, I do understand that the, um, couch, um, that it wasn't intended for it to be there like that, um, and, uh, the whole plan once it was there was that I'm gonna spring clean up, it's gonna be coming. And that was the feasible time. Um, in the winter, for some of those outside things to be done, you know, February was not the greatest month for snow and temperatures. Um, I don't have, uh, a level access to my front property. It's all sloped. So a little bit of difficulty there. Um, and so, like I said, I do intend during spring cleanup to get that couch removed. Um, there's different things that he listed out, which I was very thankful for, uh, so I knew exactly what we were kinda talking about. A bucket for sand, even though it was a kitty litter bucket. There's some little things I was just kinda like, hmm. Um, and then some of the other things I didn't see that were actually covered underneath the, the code when I read through it. Um, the bricks that were going to be used in the landscaping on that side yard. You know, unfortunately, again, I wasn't able to start the project when I planned on it, but I didn't see that that's against the code. We've had a rough winter, um, with winds and stuff. I have a double lot with nine, um, adult trees. And I'm gonna have some brush, um, down, plus one, this was, you know, brought to my attention that that would be something to clean up. There was no place to take it because nothing opened up until, I believe it was April fourth, was when the site opened up, and we were under a no burn ban. I mean, um, and I've looked at other properties and stuff, and I didn't see anything that it's against having your wheelbarrow and your lawnmower up against the side of your garage at the back of your property. So just some things like that, that I just wanted to be heard about. Um, sometimes there's extenuating circumstances that just asking would be great. Um, and sometimes things aren't the most reasonable, um, expectations for, for some of this. So that's basically it. If anybody has any questions.
Do you know we do have a sticker program in town to get rid of couches?
Nope. The last time I talked to, is it Abby?
Yeah.
Um, I was told that I would have to remove, move it from the, um, the porch. I would have to carry it along the whole dis- distance from the front of the yard to the back of the yard, um, by the alleyway where my normal garbage pickup is before he would consider picking it up. And I couldn't do that. He would not, he would not come up.
Was it on the east side of your house?
Um.
On the porch?
The front porch is on the east side on Harland.
Rolled right down ditch?
He would not do that.
I know he would. The sticker, you gotta have so many stickers on it.
Well.
He, he told me no, that I got that where the door pickup.
Instead of arguing back and forth, she was, it's not, if you were told he wouldn't do it, he wouldn't do it. So that's, that's what I live by.
But we'll have Harrison talk too, but you know we got a town cleanup the twenty-fifth of?
Yes, that's what I, I knew that was coming. And so that's why I wasn't worried about it in February and March, because I knew the spring cleanup. I, I've participated in it before, which I'm very grateful that the city has that.
So I, I see we have a letter from our code enforcement. You know, trying to, you know, asking if everything can be completed, completed by April thirtieth. Um, is that?
Is that the final one, the?
It's just a, it's just a, I don't.
Okay, yeah, that one I was received.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
There is two no, two notices, first notice, second notice.
Well, I'm talking about this letter.
Oh, it's very much, yeah.
Saying, hey, you're happy with this.
You noticed that some things.
Yeah, I, I had drove by for the third notice and I was gonna send over the city and I'm gonna see if they can pick up a bunch of stuff, so I.
Yeah, I'm trying.
That's why, that's why I sent that letter.
Yeah, and that's sort of trying to get some help to, to come out.
So is that, is it, is it on track to be done by the first then?
Yeah, we found, we found out that the railing did fit the front porch, so that metal's gone. Um, I'm cleaning the garage, which now I can do with two hands, so that I can move the, um, antique stove inside. And, um, now I can get rid of my, uh, lawn debris. So, yeah, I just wanted.
I just wish you wouldn't call me. My number's on the thing. Anybody who comes in extra time, I would definitely invite you.
So that was my next question is, did you reach out? I'm, I'm yes and no, and that's, that's, that's my idea.
I did not call you.
Um.
No, I, I suggest everybody, and whenever I see somebody outside, I'll talk to them. I actually walk up to their front door, but nobody's home. On the second notice, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, cause I think, like you said, you know, a little communication between all the individuals probably, okay, hey, you know, I'm late for spring cleanup. Okay, you probably not have noticed. You know, you might have done it, come back after spring cleanup if it's there, then you're gonna get a notice that, that, that.
And that's what I just wanted to hear heard that, I'm, I'm sure at some point, I'm not the only person that's in some of these circumstances.
And I mentioned it would be hard to tell what is discarded, Michael, you know, what if it's, I, I, you know, is there a criteria that you looked up to say, well, that's obviously discarded if it's just set outside, you know, like somebody set an old bracket.
You guys can bring the pictures that I provided, what, what's there, what's on there.
Yeah, the railing was up against the side of the garage, and then this stove, um, gets packed together, um, blue, sitting outside the, the, um, side of the garage.
So, um, I'm not being rude here by no means, so, but what, what are you wanting from us? It sounds like you and Harrison just need to communicate, just like Mike said.
It's just, like I said, I don't feel like this is probably, I'm not the only person that something like this
Sure.
may happen. And I just want the city to be aware that
Sure.
sometimes there's more extenuating and.
And I think, in, in my opinion, I, I think, you know, if it's bad weather, there's snow and everything. I'm sure Harrison's human, just, just like everybody else. He, if I'm visiting, he'd probably be like, okay, just take an extra week or something. You see what I'm saying? But the communication, the transparency is very key when it comes to this stuff. But that's why the city does hire the, um, the code enforcement to do that, to handle all of that stuff, so. Um, but like I said, I apologize if I come off rude. I'm not trying to be rude. I just didn't know if you were needing something from us.
I'm not here to pick on anybody. I'm here to uphold the city code, so.
Oh, I agree.
That, that's all.
Just, just the conversation back and forth, and I get that, you know, sometimes people, you get something from the city and you're, uh, you know, and who really wants to talk to us?
Like I said, I just been, the first one had been pulled over by the German Shepherd and, you know, still seeing those scars. Too.
So, so thankfully, we're, we're on a path to getting it resolved right now.
Yeah, I just, I just admire my way of.
Yeah, I was just saying, it's the weather.
A lot of the stuff is picked up, sorry.
Yeah, I just needed the weather to.
Sherman.
Yeah, February's very, very not, really great time.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, you should. Sorry much for coming.
And I'm glad we have Harrison. His phone number is out there.
Yes, and now I know it's nice.
Yeah, and feel free to call him. You would have said, I need help carrying my couch to the front of the lawn and say, I have a hurt arm. I'd be gladly just drive it out there for you. You would have, you would have said.
I needed to help at that time. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nine, city audit.
Yes, we received the audit to, uh, in June, so it's pretty, pretty common. Uh, if you have the question, you honestly get answered. We see the, uh, opinion of, um, the, uh, which is as we did.
We still have the same dings every year.
Yeah, I knew we had it for the next year. Uh, you, you need more people hired.
So, I'd like to thank you, Ash, for, you know, we do, we have a effective audit, which is not perfect, it's effective. Um, I am going to reiterate, I tended with, what, uh, Mr. Mayor said. And I did print out some stuff, and it's not to really ding anybody, but I, I just wanna look, it, it's almost verbatim on the twenty twenty-three, two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four on the findings. And, and the only thing, I, I know this is, there's stuff in there that we don't have enough people. I get that. But, but the, uh, the responses are, the city will review its control procedures. This is in the findings related to the financial statements. Um, it's one of the last four, five pages. Under that, um, gonna review its control procedures to obtain the maximum internal control possible with the limited staff that has. Um, the audit makes a recommendation, should we view its control activities to obtain the, I, I don't know how we measure that, so maybe that can go away. How do we do that? How do we? That's the only way, or is there policies? Cause there's some in here that talk about any policies and procedures in place. Um, uh, there's a lot of, uh,
You see the same finding as all the cities.
Right, but, but, but a lot of our responses are, um, there's one, we will attempt to implement this recommendation. Well, how do we, how does the council know if we were to really say we wanted to take this serious and do something? Okay, let's, let's say that. How do we, how do, how do we come to you and we say, how do you show us that you attempted to implement that?
Well, the idea is very clear, you need to hire more people.
Well, this is for a different, is it, is this all due to not, just the, not all of these are saying, well, it's because you have lack of people. This one here, the fact is lack of city policies and procedures.
What?
Um, a lot of them are lack of policies and procedures. There's one that says we will implement this recommendation. This is, this one here is chart of accounts.
Chart of account is something that this case has a chart of account.
Sure.
You have to, instead of saying, oh, one, dash, oh, see, dash, please, please, you have to go at the beginning, com.
Okay.
There, it's just a matter of changing the software that you have to allow you to put the numbers
True.
that can rely with this thing.
And, and I'm just bringing this, I'm not saying we're doing anything. I just, I just, I just want to.
I'm trying to, I was about to show you what the magnitude of it.
Well, I get it.
It's just the numbers.
But, but it also says we will implement this.
Well, you have to change the software.
Okay, well then.
To do it. And then the statement changes.
I get it.
Chart of code.
So, but, and I just, I'm trying to make the rest of the council aware, you know, that there are these things in here. It's not a, to me, I'm just the messenger, you know, trying to tell you. And, and, you know, when, when we have an audit at, at my, I know we have to show how we are correcting this. What are we doing? You know, do we have policies and procedures? Do we have controls in there? If it's not important to the council to address it, I'm free with that. I am doing my diligence and bringing it up to show that the past at least three years, it's been the same verbatim stuff, saying we will implement this, we will try to implement this, and we're still seeing it time to time.
Because it's, it's not material. Look a bitch for you, please.
Oh, look at that here. Of course, it's instance of noncompliance, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not just.
Right.
This is your key. No, my, my compliance, no.
Right.
I don't think Mike's accusing.
No, I'm just.
But sometimes you have to understand what I'm, I'm doing, you have to.
And, and that's what I was afraid of, bringing this up, because I get accused of accusing people all the time, but I'm not, I'm just simply saying these are the same things on.
Thanks, Harrison.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
I, I am reading to ask you to hire more people. What can I do? This is mine is wrong.
Do you, uh, do you guys need a different software to help you out? Is there a software outdated and stuff that we need to?
I attempted, how many meetings we went to to get another software, increased to 70,000. And the whole state of Iowa had software issue. Crystal zero at the same meeting, I'm going to kind of be doing the best I can, serving the other software and all this stuff. But all these things, as artists always say, is not material. You got, I'm the final thing, that's the highest opinion. I got A plus. At the car, as a kid, to bring it to my parents, but they tell you, you have bad handwriting. Will you be okay with that? When your kids bring you a car saying you got A plus, but they remove your handwriting. That's like, and if you remove the handwriting, you just keep on saying, I will, I will, I will. I don't have enough people at the city hall. I'm begging the council to hire more people for the last 71 years. What can I do? But I'm willing to give you the result of, I'm modifying the opinion, the highest opinion, and get it on it.
So what I'm saying, council, there you have your answer. I brought it to you, there you have the answer, if you're okay with it, we're good. Like I said. I know you did a good job. I'm just saying, it's there.
I shared it, I'm trying to explain too, because when you leave the public, just listen to one part. You have the highest opinion in an audit. What can, what is it gonna do? There's no higher than that. You have a bitch says there's noncompliance, it's kind of like, what else can I do? It's kind of, you, you meet in all every city, finding, yes, but because of what? Because we cannot hire more people at the city hall. I cannot do all the segregation required until I have about at least 10 people. How am I gonna get 10 people hired? I have no clue, aside from anybody was saying, I want 10 people, but at least gave me 12 more. To have, to meet that requirement, which impacts me sometimes, because the size of the town, the size of our money, so. But is it material? Is it really making you look bad in your opinion? You can't get A plus. It's just like, it doesn't matter what the little things that he or she is working on, you do the best you can. That's how I do. To me, personally, in my professional, when I get that opinion in an audit, it's like, what is it gonna do?
And I don't think, Ash, I, I don't think Mike was attacking you, but no means.
I know that, Mike and I have way to talk and all this stuff, and we settled it down years ago. Him and I, we both understand each other. He's a council member, needs to make a statement about what he feels. But at the same time, I need to make another statement, so the lobby can get the whole picture.
Yeah, absolutely. And if there's something that we shouldn't be having conversations about to, to help you, then I think that's what.
Yeah, that's it, it's like, how can we help you get to that?
Yeah, and, and like I said, hire more people, but I have, I can see if you can, you can't hire more people at the city hall. The mayor will quit because he won't go anyway. He's again, to start with, and I'm okay, but I've, I've been asking for that for 71 years. And I'm doing the best out of what I have.
Thank you.
You are.
In motion on the right.
You need the motion.
Motion on the.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second, how about Patrick?
Yes.
Kava?
Yep.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Okay, Ken, general obligation insurance funding agreement. At this time, I opened the public hearing. Did you receive anything?
Nope.
Comments, concerns from general public? Close public hearing. B, resolution number 4208C. Taking a decision. Seven, one, three, four.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Can I share?
Oh, okay.
Uh, Chip Schultz with Dorplein, uh, I'll just offer a couple items. This will be the last year that the city will be able to do this financing. The, there's a proposal that's at the state legislature that ends this. Mean bonding for operating cost, it makes sense in your case, because it did a couple things, helped lower your levy overall a couple years ago. Because you have such a large state valuation. This will be the last year it can happen. So they're removing that authority from the code. And that legislation has not yet been approved and signed by the governor, but from the league of cities, they say it's happened. So, heads up on next year's budget, and I've got more details on a subsequent item that can give a little more background.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Kava.
How do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Kava?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Okay, 11, Wumble, phase three, long-term, three months. Check again.
But, uh, just informational here tonight, because you're obviously just getting these items. So there's a couple, um, of pieces of legislation at the state legislature, one of which sounds definitely like it's gonna happen this year. Uh, and it'll impact the, uh, it'll limit the city's ability to collect tip revenues. So I just wanted to point that out. So I'll just hit a few highlights, and again, this is just informational only, so. That's discussion items tonight, and then, uh, perhaps a more detailed discussion later. So the second, the second page reviews background on House Study Bill 328. Which is the same corresponding legislation as Senate Study Bill 1227. Does a few things. It limits the city's CGFL or combined general fund levy to 2%. And it might be adjusted for a CPI-based, inflation-based budget adjustment factor. The big concern for the city, uh, there's a proposal to take the, there's a 540 school uniform levy across the state on all taxable property. Every property in the state has that, that's included in your consolidated TIP levy calculation. That 540 might go down to 297. There's a big push to lower property tax burdens on local citizens. So that 540 to 297, that'll lower your consolidated levy for TIP by, what, what is that, $2.43? If, if you look at it, your valuation in TIP for the current, oh, excuse me, the upcoming fiscal year FY25, '26 is 64 million. That change of 240, that lowers your TIP revenue by 170,000 per year. Nothing you did, the city, it's outside of your control, but I'm told from the Iowa league cities, that's happening. So that becomes really important when we look at the long-term financing for housing phase, overall phase four, Wumble third edition. That, uh, as a reminder, that short-term debt matures June 1 of 2026. It's callable on June 1 of 2025. So what I had talked with Ash a few weeks ago about was, we should start to evaluate getting that long-term financing in place. Because up until early April, there was a nice rally in the bond market, interest rates were down. The 10-year treasury was in about 3, um, 3.85% in early April. That's down from the mid 4% range in, in January. Interest rates were down nicely. That's reversed over the past week and a half or so, or you've probably seen the news, so. It's a change. It seemed to be, a couple of weeks ago seemed to be a good time to go through long-term financing. But wanted to get some items for the council, just to review some background. Next page, in the interest of trying to be brief. This legislation set different legislation, Senate, but similar, Senate Study Bill 1214. This would remove the consult, the school uniform levy of 540. That would totally remove it from the TIP calculation. So that takes your, you know, 64 million applied 540s, that, that cuts your consolidated levy down very significantly. If this happens, I'll be very candid, I don't know how the city is gonna pay the long-term debt for housing phase four. It's extremely serious, uh, if this were a get-go place. I've never been as concerned about something as I am this, after 26 years of public finance. That cuts your annual TIP revenue by 345,600. It is staggering. What it also does, it, um, caps TIP collection. One element is that it caps TIP collection at 60% of the available TIP revenue. That's in item C on page three of 10. So if you got round numbers, city collects about 2 million in TIP per year, 60% applied to that, that caps it at a million two. That wipes out 7, 800,000. This, um, we can, this can't happen for the city's sake. Just, uh, get this under radar, I guess. So, uh, next page. As you evaluate, consider, you know, some of the known TIP requests and some that are likely to be forthcoming. I would want to work with you to help find a recent plan to finance all these items. There's just not gonna be as much TIP girl go around as there has been in the past. Uh, if, particularly if the legislation on page three gets enacted. Um, that's a highlight on that page. So what, what are some solutions? Page, page five. Trying to just overall take the approach of moderating the use of TIP for city projects. I know you've got the proposal for Front Street, I'm not sure where the council's at on that. That's just gonna have to be planned pretty carefully. I'm not sure what the cost is that we can ask for from the city to participate. It'd be nice if that can wait a bit. I don't want to tell you guys what to do, but.
I was, I was. I think they were looking at like 2026.
I just talked to Josh Seaburn, he's an accounting engineer, and he's looking at, the earliest construction would take place would be late, late 2026 into 2027.
Didn't you say we're in better shape in '29?
You bet, and you can, we can make two years. It's hard to make five years' work.
Right.
Now to 2030.
And I, I think the council has expressed some desire to really kind of watch our projects here for the next couple of years to get some of that stuff to fall off.
You bet. It's, we got it, we're moving in the right direction. It's just, uh, I want to. Be careful, extremely tight. So we'll have, for FY, the FY27 budget, that insurance borrowing, that's gonna go away, so the levy approach will have to change. What had been assumed in the 2022 and 2023 planning for housing phase four. The city, and with TIP resources and your debt service fund balance, you had about a million one in cash between those two funds. Some of that's been, is gonna be spent down in FY26. There was a deficit in TIP projected to be in the range of right around 700,000. So we had that, because we were so tight, we had that deficit covered with this cash. Million one covers 700. If this TIP legislation goes forward, if this goes forward. I think you mean thank you. Uh, if this goes forward, that deficit. If the first legislation goes forward, that deficit would be about a million five, 2 million six. That's manageable if we restructure some of your debt, primarily the 2019 debt for, it's for all saints principally. If the legislation on page four happens. There's a lot more serious things to look at. So, um, city did a refunding in 2020. That, um, 6.2 million refunding, that's a 2.3%. That one would probably have to be refunded in the current market. That 2.3% is gonna be close to six probably. Cause it's a, it'd be a taxable financing. That's, um, gonna be a tough filter to follow. So.
On this bench, Chip, I just wanna say, thank you for bringing this to the council, you know. We, uh, I think we had a meeting before this meeting.
We did.
County supervisor and Michael and Dolly at the meeting, and we visited a little bit over these things. We have a big challenge coming up, you know, next year. I don't wanna be really saying more than Chip said in this page. But I think we will all gonna be work, we need to work together on the next budget, you know, coming up here in December or January, we need for the budget work session. Well, as you see here, 99% of what the challenge you're gonna face is not something that we created here, actually. Something coming to us from the state, you know, that people, they said, they did for us and, uh, we don't wanna go in details. But we have a lot of challenge coming up. With our financial position now, and I think that's how I sense Chip and he sent me back, who are able to deal with these things. But what, what Chip and myself trying to explain is, down the road, we need to have a plan. You know, I am not getting any younger, and I'm saying this analysis to everybody. I am, you know, older, I can stop aging. And I, I just wanna make sure that, as with Big Man, we financial strong. Okay, and I wanna leave it like that for whoever comes next. Which is the mayor's trying to find a way to have someone to be able to help hire when my, when my time comes. But I just would like to tell the council that we need to have a long-term plan for the future. As with Big Man, we financial strong. I'm sorry if I elaborated or interrupted you, but I want the council to see, because we're gonna have a change in the council coming up very soon. But the change shouldn't affect that what I do, because I have been here for 71 years. I've seen council member in and out, utility board member in and out, but the work still. And I wanna make sure that I'm gonna deliver it this way. It doesn't matter when I retire, but I'm not gonna be here as long as I have. I wanna make sure that everybody gets that, because I have spoke with a board member that asked me to let the council and the board knows what I'm doing. Any questions about?
And I think we talked earlier in the year about sitting down even earlier with Chip.
Yes.
And developing that plan, that long-term plan, so I think we have it in the right.
And I, I just wanna come out of me, so everybody will know that is that this mutual agreement here between.
Okay, sure.
All right, Chip, answer it.
No, uh, thank you. Page six of 10, just to highlight, this is the existing, uh, TIP paid debt of the city. That's, it's, looks like this in the Excel page. So you'll note that I intentionally included some history here back to fiscal year 21, '22. In the column to the right. You can see in FY28, '29, row six. That, that's where the peak is in the, in the TIP certification for that year. It's 2,282. It drops down pretty aggressively thereafter, especially '30, '31, it's a million 287, and 659,000 in FY31, '32. Pretty, pretty good after that. So it's through '28, '29 where we got the challenges and just have to plan accordingly, so. This does not yet, as I noted at the top right, does not yet include the long-term debt for housing phase four. We've got a, there's a couple pieces on that, just to work out the final project cost, including the interest earnings. And then I think you've got some remaining debt proceeds, you can, that was used for contingency, to the extent that wasn't used for change orders. We can apply that to buy down and pay out for short term, not have to convert to long term. So that's all good. We just have to work out those pieces. Page seven of 10, that's just the funding breakdown for, that was paid by the 2023 project notes. Under uses, the project fund deposits, that breaks out the detail for housing phase four, the sports, sports complex and the TIP and land purchase. The next page is, this is the key, the key column to look at here is, is, um. The final interest payment in the interest, excuse me, the interest column, the third column, there's interest due in FY25, '26 at 395,200. That was included in last year's TIP certification. And net out, that really reflected about a, a buy-down of TIP cash of about 200,000. So just, that's the last payment on that. If you pay, go to the long-term debt sooner, that, you won't accrue all that interest in FY25. FY twenty-five, twenty-six. And the, behind the tab, that, this is just for your reference later, that's information from Iowa League of Cities on profit tax legislation. Toward the end of that, there's a PowerPoint that, part of why I couldn't get this to you sooner, this came out on Friday, but it's updated most recently for the last changes at the end last week from the state legislature. That PowerPoint at the end includes those changes. So if you, I don't know if you have a meeting planned for late April potentially, I know folks don't necessarily care or cheer for special meetings, but this. My warrant today, maybe if you're of the mind, it's really cute if you wanna do that. At the bond market conditions have changed. You don't have to do anything until June, twenty twenty-six, but I'd like to, you know, get sitting in a position to move ahead whenever you're ready.
But if, you said if we can move it into long-term debt, we can potentially save that three hundred and ninety-five thousand in the interest?
You will.
Because it might just move us to?
Potentially, yes.
To do something? I mean.
It, I think you only want to do anything if there's, if you saw a nice drop in interest rates.
Right.
So, last, this is what happened. Last week was the worst week for the bond market US treasuries since two thousand and one. So rates rose the most in a week, narrowly speaking, on a week's concrete, last week the most since two thousand and one, worse than COVID, worse than the financial crisis. Not helpful for the city, but the flexibility, you got the flexibility to wait, so let's get to wait.
Is that something we could put into a motion or, you know, some sort of a motion whenever we get to that point where we just take that on Chip? If he saw fit where there was a dip again, that we would just give him the power? Or we just give him the power to do it?
I think we just say, if you, if he sees it.
Without calling a special meeting and waiting, just one week can change.
Yeah.
Days.
We, if, if that's the case, if we wanna be able to jump in a short period of time, we'd wanna prepare an official statement, have a public hearing, get all the pieces, because this takes, this'll take three or four meetings.
Yeah.
Probably three. But you wanna get those preliminary steps in, in place and then you can, you know, if you have two or three days notice, we can.
So we can get stuff set up ahead of time?
Yep.
And then just be able to say, okay, even if it's like a month later, we can still go, we don't have to have.
That'll just stay there.
Okay.
It'll still be good.
I think.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, just let me know.
So K was it?
There, there's a lot more detail to go through and I can do that at the, this didn't probably take an hour, I can tell you that, but.
Do we just need to schedule a, a special meeting just to have you go through things?
If you, if you don't mind.
I, I, it sounds like it.
Yeah, it sounds like we just need to.
It just sounds like we should be doing this.
By April, we should know the final outcome of the legislation too, so.
No, it's just, it's just.
You still don't want it to be set and I'll ask?
Throw a date out there.
Monday, April twenty-eighth. That, that you're, sometimes your specials are the fourth Friday of the month. That's the fourth Friday thing.
No. Yeah, you said Monday and then you said Friday.
I'm, I'm sorry. I meant pardon me.
I will down every two years.
That's your pardon.
April twenty eighth.
I'm sorry.
Five seventy, six, five seventy.
Whatever time you say, folks.
Okay, April twenty eighth, five seventy.
Monday.
Monday. Yeah, it's just for two years.
Monday and twenty.
Five seventy, Monday.
That doesn't affect your cleanup, or painting and all that with the kids. That's just.
That's during.
Nine eleven thirty.
Yeah, it's gonna take more hours.
Cleanup.
Yeah, but you're, what's your kids again?
No, that's just during the.
Okay, April twenty eighth, five seventy, Monday.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, city engineer Forrest, ready?
Forrest Aldridge meets here in Ken. So there's a couple of assessments in front of you this evening. The first one is for the San Diego sewer system improvements. This is through Visu Sewer. This is the work that was done primarily on the south side of town related to the Harlan sewer going north of town. This work is pretty much done. We've gotta review some tapes and some reports and Jim has not seen anything yet, so this would just be payment, but we're not accepting the project until we review all that. We're not changing our team until we, until we see that. So this is for payment of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-six.
And they don't need to come back and do anything or like punch list style or anything like that? That'd be for the last payment.
Right, this, that'd be the last payment. Everything they did is all underground and you have sewers themselves. And like I said, the reports, they might have to come back, we see something, but they would do it internally.
Oh, sure.
What's that for?
If they had to come back and fix something, a service they mess, they have to come back and then do that internally.
Restoration's been done as a plan.
Okay.
Make that motion.
How do you go? Patrick?
Yes.
How about?
Yep.
Goldie?
Yes.
Russell?
So this is assessment to Arden's lighting, and so this is for the streetlights out in Wumble. And again, we need to do a walkthrough, make sure everything's right and, but this is not, so we're not accepting the project. They'll be at the next council meeting, but this is partial payment assessment for seven thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. I think the lights are working.
Correct. Motion. I'm making moves.
Motion. How do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
How about?
Yep.
Goldie?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes. A couple, couple of things.
Oh, I got a question.
Okay. The trail going from second to the cul-de-sac, that work is done, the turnaround at the north end of the north street out there.
Tierney Trail.
Tierney Trail, thank you. That work is done. I was out there looking at it, see a few things we need to talk about to finish it up, but they, they did get the payment estimate two million time for the agenda tonight, so that I don't have to wait till the, your May meeting, or if you have a special meeting, maybe we can tack it onto that, because that's work is all done, you have to pay out. You tried to get it to me last week, it didn't come through and got to me today and that. So didn't make the agenda, so for that. Mackenich? Wish I was here, seeing everything is done, but they've made a lot of progress. The fence is done around L Y. They've done some of the work on the lift station, they've done some work cleaning things up, but they're not done then. So I would, they're getting closer, I would anticipate they'll be, they better be done then by the May.
Painting is done at the lift station. We have discovered another leak in the valve ball, so I talked to the foreman today and they would send a crew out to look at it and see what it is and get it taken care of.
So they're making progress, but they're not all the way there yet.
Hopefully with fingers crossed, they'll be done by May, because you just heard Chip saying that we're, we need to get some houses.
Well, the, I think Matt's, Matt maybe will give his report, but they've turned that loose.
Yeah.
Good.
So they were working on the lift station today.
Yes, they were doing this morning, painting, finishing up.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Thank you, Sue.
That, that, I just wanna know, I saw some outlifts testing this morning.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thirteen and twenty-six, thirty budget. At that time, I opened the public hearing and you received anything? Comments, concerns from Jenna Parton?
Did anything change from the paperwork I got?
No. It's, he likes ads in Jen. Thank you.
Close the public hearing then? Where's you know, she number ten of our seventeen doctor in the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six city budget? You got any kind of thing back there?
Oh, wait.
How do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
How about?
Yes.
Goldie?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Okay, Stewart and Kenon Development Director, Matt Park?
Okay, so I think Forrest gave you an update on the Mackenich. We did release the lots, I sent out an email to everybody that had submitted interest in lots, builders and individuals. On that day, I got back eight purchase agreements. We're at twelve purchase agreements now. Now, they have not been deeded, the properties have not been deeded to them yet, okay? We still have to approve, or I'm sorry, still need to get their application for building permits and stuff like that. So, but the purchase agreements have been received and we'll do our diligence and then form the deed of property at that time. So any other questions about blocks and? Like mentioned, the Women's Entrepreneurial Event in Power Herd, that will be this coming Thursday. And generally brings a good number of people to town. I have in the past brought, we've had sixty people in attendance, so. And then also, now we're gonna have Amy Coolers. Yep, she will be speaking next about certified sites program. I did, you got all this stuff in her packets and I sent you an email with the attachments.
I do have something before you go here, Matt, sorry. I know, let's rewind a couple of years here where you talked about the lot up there at All Saints with that retention pond. And I think a couple of us talked about maybe separating that from the retention pond just so we can get a house on there. And I believe, don't quote me, that you said that the seed would like to kind of hold that together. Where are we at with that? Because I'd like to see a house on that. If we gotta separate it, let's separate it, but as you can hear, that we're, we're a little tight on funds and everything, and if we can get a house there, I'd say let's get a house there. And, and I know I'm not gonna make friends with Jim at the moment, but because somebody's gonna have to take care of that and mow it, and if we have to, you know, if we have to pay somebody to mow that or whatever, that, I guess that's my opinion on it, I'd rather see a, get a house on there. It's been a long time. This is the fourth year that I've been on and it's, we've been kicking the can long enough, you know, hoping that somebody take it, but nobody's gonna take it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, of those twelve sites that you got, are, did any of them take the two lots that have retention ponds on them in the Wumble?
No.
Isn't there two, Forrest?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we separated this one, we'd have to separate them all, because we don't wanna have certain lots.
Yeah.
That have it. So it wouldn't be just one thing, that would have to be moved, be three. So, but go ahead, that's.
Once, just once you've done the one, you've set a precedent.
Right.
Jim? And I think before you do that, you wanna look at the other ones, because that is some terrain that you don't wanna have to maintain on the new one.
Is that?
It is pretty severe terrain.
And is that also gonna deter people from putting a house there?
Yep. Yes, possibility.
Yeah.
And the, you know, the fact that the city coordinates of having all of your lawn mowed, when something could maybe be allowed to be allowed as a natural habitat, but that probably requires some kind of exception or something to the city code, I don't know the detail on that, but it's here. So.
Some of the, that, I think we need to look at. You know, if we're gonna lose lots because people don't want those, then this is kind of a concern.
Now, in fact, one of the builders had commented, they tried, two builders worked aggressively to try to sell lot thirty-three, or get somebody to take it, and they said that they would wait for Wumble to wait, Wumble tree to open up, and they had people, two people had waited since August of last year and waiting. And they kept repeatedly telling thirty-three's available, they did not want it.
Forrest, maybe, I don't know if you can answer this, but like Corey said, is that something, can that, he designated something else besides, like he said, natural habitat or something that can make it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, by ordinance, if you want.
It's just, it's just our call.
It's your call.
Okay.
If you wanna allow some other kind of vegetation that's not mowed in those cases, so that's, that's up to your discretion.
Okay.
And that might be something that, you know, if we do, do a natural, maybe you have a mowed like twice a year. I know there's some land management guys out there with skid loaders and big equipment that could come in there.
Well, the, the terrain on a couple of those.
Probably wouldn't.
I, I would not.
Okay.
I would not take a mower in it. I would.
Yeah, I'm the new one, right? I'm the new guy, saw some of that.
I don't know, I don't know the solution to that.
So if it's, if we, and, and I hear Jim, if we can put a mower on it, how are we expecting the homeowners to do that? You see what I'm saying? It's just, so now do we just sit on these lots forever? Because nobody's gonna take them. And it's the same way without the All Saints, you know, with the lots that I'm talking about, it's, they've been sitting there for a long time and we've got, the city's got money invested in those lots with the utilities running in there and their work and blah, blah, blah. So.
Who would be able to do some investigation on a different kind of stuff to put in there that didn't have, Jim?
I can take care of that.
You wanna do, would you mind? Just kind of see what we got and then maybe we can, I mean, if it works for all three, then, then we can do it. I, I just would hate to do it on one, you know?
Yeah, absolutely, no, I agree with you.
I know a guy.
What's that?
I know a guy.
Oh, okay. Good, good. Yeah, so let's visit that and then if we can get that going, then I can see what we can.
Yeah.
Thank you, man.
Okay, I can't. Thank you for coming out.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My store, we can take place this week, so. So I was present in, I was called, I guess by Brian, to talk to the utility council here about a month ago now, about our certified site program that we have through I E T A. And it's a program basically where you invest as a community, it can be a landowner all the way up to a community, a county, whatever the government body wants to be. But you invest in a property, a set number of acres that you might have available or have options on, that you want to use to get certified, basically doing all the due diligence, planning, all the survey, things like that that need to be done in order to make that site more attractive to a developer. So what we do is it's about a year long process. We have a certified site company that we use, a third-party site selection, their, their main role is a site selection company, they're, they're very well-known, located in Green, um, Green, the role, Greensville, sorry, South Carolina, South Carolina, that's the town is the hub of all this, the site locators, but they are very good at what they do and we have a very strategic program, some criteria are pretty tight. Basically, what we'll do is we'll, if you're interested, I think we'll draw those steps, but the program really walks you through getting everything you need to have prepared for investment in that property. So that means all your boundary surveys are done, the options, or the land, the land is either owned by the applicant, or you have options on that land for up to three years, certification period is three years, that you've done all your due diligence surveys, your archaeological, architectural, your threatened endangered species, phase one, your geochack, just all of those things you need to do in your boundary survey to make sure the title and things is where it needs to be. As far as utilities, there are capacities that we look at depending on the size of the site or of the park. And those are things that, most of what we deal with is farmland, that kind, it's the farm, it's some of the piece or old farm that we all have. We don't expect there to be infrastructure moved into that land. Most of our land that is certified continues to be leased until a project is identified. And at the time that project is identified and somebody says, yes, we're gonna go, that's when the clock starts ticking on what those time, well, there's time, certain timelines that are set for the, when the utilities have to be at that site. By utilities, we look at water, wastewater, natural gas, telecommunications and rail, if you have a rail certified site. Uh, by utilities, we look at water, wastewater, natural gas, uh, telecommunications, and rail, if you have a rail certified site. So, again, what we ask you to do as a, as an applicant is to get all the planning and the costs put in place so you know what it's going to run you to bring that utility to that location. Um, there's mapping, there's a lot of things that, that we, uh, walk you through that process with. It takes about a year to go through the process. Um, we cover all of the site consultant's costs. That's what I E D A does for this, for the program. Uh, the community, um, well, the applicant will cover the cost of the due diligence. So all of those surveys, the title, the options, we don't, um, we don't do anything with the options, the land purchase and get that. But we, uh, we do pay for all the consultant's costs. Included in that consultant cost is a site visit, so they will come out. They will meet with the team that is certifying that. That could be your utilities, that could be, uh, team members that come at, uh, whoever is involved in that process on a daily basis. Uh, we would sit down with them, with our consultants, and we'd treat this like an actual site visit, like there was a project that they were representing to bring into the community. This is what they're looking for. Um, we would just walk through all of the process that you have, things you have available. If you've got sweet spot, we have a lot of water, this is a great water site, um, if you have natural gas, it's excellent, um, you know, so some of those attributes that you might have. And then we walk, take a look at the, the site. Um, sometimes it's really cold in people in November sometimes, and, uh, so it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a nice process. It is, uh, it can be, it's, it's, um, it takes, it takes a lot of courage to go through because it's, it's not supposed to be paying apart. But at, um, at the end of this certification period, you don't absolve everything you need to know about this land. Somebody said to me once that very true, you know, every squirrel has a name on that property because you've gone through it. So what does that do for you? That allows you to answer, answer an RFP very quickly. Um, if you've ever had an RFP come through, you know that many times they'll want that turned around within a few days. And, uh, they have a select number of items that they want you to fill out. Sometimes it's up to two hundred questions about things, and it's hard to turn around. This gives you that, that quick, um, response time for that. So you can get all of that information. We also provide you with a very nice certification deliverable that encapsulates everything that you've gone through in the process, all of the studies you went through, the mapping, we, I E D A pays for a mapping set for every site that goes through certification. Um, all of the criteria, everything that you've done, and we put that together in a package for you then to be able to use also as a marketing tool. The other, uh, there's several things that we do from an I E D A standpoint, uh, the certified sites are the open sites that we market. Um, there are almost a thousand sites. If you're, if you're familiar with the Lotus, Lotus database, it's a N L S for industrial sites and commercial properties, uh, that the state uses. Uh, site selectors look at it for potential locations. Most site selectors no longer come to the state and say, hey, I'm kind of looking for this, what do you got? Instead, they're gonna do all, most of them do their own searching initially. They'll weed out things that they aren't interested in, and then they'll get ahold of us. Um, but the Lotus database has about, almost a thousand properties, eight hundred, nine hundred properties. And of those, right now, we currently only have twenty-two sites that are, that are certified, and those are the ones that they'll, ninety, ninety percent of the time, they're going to look at those first because speed to market is very important to them. If they have to wait another full year for all of those things to get done, um, that's gonna put them, um, a year off from actually being able to dig dirt or get product on the line. So it's becoming more and more, um, more and more of a priority for site, uh, site locators. So, um, like I said, last time, uh, I was here, you, you do have a nice, nice location. You're on an interstate traffic, uh, you have many sites that aren't located on, you know, a good transportation hub, and you have that. Um, you're within, you know, the, the Des Moines radius as far as workforce and things like that. So you've got things going for you here that, that you could look at, consider, consider attributes to pursuing this. Um, the question I usually always get is how much is this gonna cost us? And, and I'm, I'm behind, uh, the, we're not going to have any money, gentlemen, here. Don't worry about that, but I, you know, I guess you look at it as an investment, but, uh, and again, I work with the state, but I've, I've said I'm one of the good guys. Anyway, uh, it, it varies. The, the cost is gonna vary depending on the size of the site. We have two, uh, two criteria, um, as far as parks or sites. Uh, one is a, a site, we look for a single user on the site. And the other one's a park where we would split that up into lots or parcels if you have multiple users. And really, the only difference between those two are the capacities for the utilities. If you can have a single user, you're obviously not gonna use as much, uh, of your utility capacity as you would if you were planning for multiple users. We, um, we can take a minimum site for a single user, it's a twenty-five acre park, or, I'm sorry, twenty-five acre parcel. Uh, so much of that has to be developable. And then for a park, if you wanted to look at multiple subdividing into multiple parcels, the minimum acreage is fifty. So that's what we look at, and then the capacities, depending on what size that is, the capacities for the utilities are going to change and get more, uh, get greater as those acreages get higher, acreage numbers. And the cost also is the same. So if you're, if you're going to certify or you're gonna do due diligence on a thirty-acre parcel, um, that's gonna cost you probably a lot less than if you were going to do a two-hundred-and-fifty-acre parcel. Obviously, there's more to do. So it just, it goes up, um, based on that. So we just always encourage people to get, um, at least two quotes from their engineering, from the engineering firms that they're looking to work with. Uh, many communities I know have firms that they already work with, and that's fine too. Um, so it's, it's just totally up to you, but, um, it's a good program. It's been around, we started it in twenty-twelve. Uh, there's twenty-two properties now we currently have. We have one that's going to be certified in, on Thursday, so we have one that's coming in. We've got another, we've got, um, we've got six right now in the, in the, in the tube from, that are gonna be certified in this year, and then we've got another six that should be next year. So we, we always keep a pipeline going, and then there's some years we don't have it. So it just depends on what's available, and, um, and a lot of times it, it depends on who the council is or who the governing body is at the time and what, what they're, what their, how interested they are about that particular subject. So, um, but cost-wise, again, I, I can't give you a flat-out number. It can rate, it can range anywhere from fifty thousand dollars maybe for a small site, probably more. These days, I haven't done a survey of, of users since about twenty-nineteen, and costs have gone considerably since then, but, um, so then it can go up. We have two, the, the last quote we had then for a large site, this one's, uh, almost eight hundred acres, and that one was located right at about two hundred thousand. But that's, again, that's a very large site, and we don't see a lot, we don't see very many of those. But the sites do ebb and flow. Some get sold. Um, some people just, uh, for whatever reason, determine they're not gonna recertify again. Um, so we always have a variety of numbers of certified sites, and the range is usually anywhere between about twenty-five, so we're down to a little bit right now, twenty-five to about thirty-five, anywhere in there between the ones that are getting sold and coming. So it, it's, it's a nice funnel. You're, uh, you're, you're down here at the end of the funnel if you're certified versus that, that eight hundred, the nine hundred properties that are being looked at.
So when you talk about, uh, recertifying, is, is that the same money?
It is not.
Okay.
It is not, because there used to be a five-year certification, and we, we are continually checking the market, seeing what, what the developers are looking at, what the industry looks like, and it's, it's quicker now. So we reduced that certification type down to three years. So some of those starter studies that you've done, geotech for one thing is, I think, fifteen years, so you wouldn't have to get that one done for a while. The other ones are usually good for about, for five, so that's why we can start out with a five. Since you'd be recertified in three years, several for that first recertification, the cost will be considerably less because you wouldn't have to do that. And then what happens, the next time you, if you have been, or it's not sold or whatever, at that point, and you go into another recertification after those studies have been done, in most cases, if nothing has been done, you're still, the farm, the land's still being farmed, uh, we work with you on that. Um, archeological, for example, you're not gonna have a new, a burial site that was discovered in the last five years. This is not gonna happen. So there's usually ways we can go and just get a letter from the, um, from you saying nothing has happened, this land is the same, and we, we work with that. So the cost upfront for the first certification is more, definitely more than what the recertifications are.
So our location here in Stewart, are we in competition? Maybe you can say, maybe you can, but are we in competition? I mean, is there a, a lot more communities around us that are looking at this, or are we kind of a standalone now from this area?
Um, in your area right here, you're alone. Obviously, uh, Dallas County has several certified sites. Um, to the east, they've got several, Budrant has three, now Iowa State doesn't have one. And then they're located all throughout the state, but, um, we talked, no, the, the next one coming online on Thursday is, is Des Moines, and this is their very first site. But it's also located on the, on the western side, southwestern, or, I'm sorry, southeastern side of the, of the city. So I would say, you know, and it, it always just depends on what a locator's looking for. They have, they may be looking at supplier changes, they may be looking at wind energy, they, they could be, you know, they could look at, they could be looking at a lot of things. They may want just something that's big and flat and has a good transportation access. Um, so it really, it's a case-by-case basis. For instance, I know that when we landed the Amazon over a Budrant epic, um, distribution, so they landed their, they said, well, there's other reasons, but the reason that that was the site they really went with was because they, they started digging dirt basically a week after they closed on that deal, and they started working on that. Um, because they were certified and everything was done, they were ready to do that. That's, you know, that doesn't happen every day, but, um, that was one of the reasons they wanted to put to market. And that was, you know.
Of all of the sites that you've had certified, how many would you say have had a project put on?
Uh, we've had better luck probably with our parks, with our sites, so the ones that have been subdivital. They are, uh, they tend to, you know, be attract, we don't see the larger users. We have had two mega sites, that's a thousand acres plus. Those are really set up to attract automobile manufacturing, big, big industry. Um, so those are specifically set aside. We have one of those in Mills County right now, and then the other one was sold. And that one was aside, the band ended up parceling that out as well. I am not gonna tell you from the state of Iowa that you can certify as a site and then not, and then subdivide it into a park. I'm not gonna tell you, no, you're not gonna, you can't do that. We want, we want, we want you guys to have development. I just always tell people, watch those capacities for those utilities. We did have a site that ran into a lot of problems with that because they were certified as a site. They had utilities for capacity for that site. They located a, a large manufacturing company. Um, and they still have remaining acres left, and then another manufacturing company came down. Processing, or food processing, one, one was a manufacturing, food processing. But because of so, so much of the capacity was already taken by that first one, specifically with natural gas in that instance, that they really struggled and it, it, it was difficult. So I just say, it'd be open budget communication, make sure utility providers are always involved in this process.
So what's, uh, what, what's a good number that you're seeing, um, these, these sites being taken? Is it, is it a fifty-acre site? Is it a two-hundred-acre site? What's a good site where it's really grabbing the people who are looking?
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
I do, absolutely do. I sit by our development team, our, kind of our sales force team, and they're always saying that, they're always looking for big sites. So anything that they can get that's a hundred to two hundred acres is great, but a fifty-acre site's a big site. Um, it depends on, again, it's a case-by-case basis, so it depends on what is located there. Um, you know, I can't, I wish I could just give you a good answer for all of that, that it really just depends. I don't know, I wish I had one. It really just depends on what that particular user's looking for.
Sure.
So, um, and I can't even say bigger's better, because you do have good luck on the smaller parcels, but the smaller parcels, um, you know, usually that means that there's, there may be a, a, a company that lands there, and then maybe some supplier companies that maybe will be attracted to that site because of the, one of the main companies is there or something. I mean, there's just a lot of different things that are gonna happen with that, but I think, um, that just kind of a lot of this to be presented to give you some food for thought. You should have our guidebook in your packet. I think I can provide you with that, like reading. Uh, but if you have any questions, I'm always available. Uh, we do have two application rounds a year. We kick off in January every year for both application rounds, and then we have one where the, the application has to be submitted by June thirty, uh, for our first round. That has all the due diligence and everything has been done, and then there's still a lot of work that has to be done after that. That's when our consultants really step in, and and we work with you the whole time through the process. We have monthly touchpoint calls, talk to you about what you're doing, what questions you have, and and that's another nice thing is that the consultants are very accessible. If you've got questions, you can email me. So it really gives you some nice, uh, contact with some, some really quality site locators that know what they're doing, um, a lot more than me as an I E D A standpoint.
I did notice in, in one of these I was reading that there was a deadline of April fifteenth tomorrow.
That's.
What was that?
Yeah, that was different. We have a one-time, or at least one-time, right now, there was a, to, to encourage communities in rural Iowa to look at certification. We, there was a grant that the legislature passed last year. Uh, it was a match grant, that's, um, yeah, that's due tomorrow. And that is, um, again, it was a one-time thing. We didn't get, they didn't provide us any funding this year for, for next fiscal, fiscal year. But I think it was more of a beta. Let's see how many people apply for that. Let's see how it went for them, and then, um, maybe the following year for fiscal year twenty-seven, we might see some more action on that. So we have had, um, five applicants for that, and, um, that closes farrow at midnight, actually, I thought it was fifty-nine, something. And then, um, we'll review those. Uh, there's another two, um, communities that I know I've talked to about it who may still be submitting their application tomorrow yet, so. And we were kind of looking for eight. That was kind of our, so I'm, I'm pretty happy with five. Um, we'd like to see some interesting things happen, and it also helps, it would just offset some of that due diligence cost. So it was a, a match of thirty-seven, five from, from us matching, um, thirty-seven, five from the community, and then everything above that is, is on, on the community, the applicants. But I'm not saying that, if we have good results with, uh, this year, I'm hoping that maybe next year they'll look at that again.
True. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I just would like to add now, I just wanna make sure there's clarification that, uh, the city does not purchase any property. There's no land purchase. When the housing development occurred, we had to purchase the land, and then Peter and Kim handled the engineering. On a project like this, you don't purchase the land, you get an option to purchase from farmers. The, the cost would be our engineering cost to lay out plan one, as an example, and Forrest on the housing development. They map out, there's gonna be water lines here, sewer lines here, gas lines here. We gotta run all those infrastructure roads. They prepare all that. Well, that still requires time, so that's the cost.
So do we reach out to our locals, say our local farmers and say, we're kind of looking at this site? Do, we would have to get permission to do that, correct? Is, is it, am I following you?
Yes, so I would rely on the experience from Forrest and Andy.
Yeah, I think those conversations obviously have to happen with the landowners, and you'll, you probably know who you have, and you're, you probably know what area you, you're thinking might be developable. You know who those landowners are, um, probably have a feeling of whether or not, but, but just going and having a cup of coffee with them.
True.
Seeing if they're interested in, in possibly selling for economic development. The nice thing is, um, you know, economic development and land typically is going to have a better return on investment than agriculture lands and costs more per acre than.
So you'd almost have to have some sort of a informal number two for a purchase agreement?
Uh, we do look at comparables, so it's not like a farmer can say, my land's worth seventy-five thousand dollars an acre when the land right next to his, it's pretty, let's say, topography is, you know, according to the Iowa State land analysis is only, you know, typically thirty-five thousand dollars. So we do look at those things, and if, if there is a reason that, um, a, a landowner thinks their price should be higher, we just need a justification for that. What are you thinking about that? Um, is there infrastructure already there? Uh, we do have, we do have applicants or people that have gone through certification that have actually started as they can, taking infrastructure into the site. So the more infrastructure that's on a site, the, the better you're, quicker to market, yeah, it is, so it's just more attractive. This is usually, um, applicants, cities that maybe own the land themselves, so they aren't, you know, maybe they farm it right now, they just take it out of of the production and just go start putting infrastructure and things like that. There's a lot of different ways you can do it, really. It's, it's solely up to the community. But, but starting those conversations with the landowners, I think trying to identify who those are that you might be interested at some point, probably most acres would be first. Options is usually the hardest circle. When you can get past that, the rest of it's pretty much false in place.
Thanks for saying that, yeah.
Great, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, so I just wanted to add that one idea is possibly the, maybe see if, uh, there could be some cost sharing between maybe the utility board and the ci, and the city, and maybe our, if you see if C would be able to contribute, uh, serve you. Survey, see if they're able to get some cost sharing on that. And then, I don't know if Forrest would like to add anything, you know, regarding the engineering process? That's, that'd be our resource, I mean, that's who I have to rely on and Forrest's got tons of money, you know. So we can't get him to enroll in this for free like he has, for the remainder of 1.3.
Yeah.
Have you done this before Forrest?
We have, yes.
Have you had to do any of their re-certification on any of them?
I mean, that's pretty easy. I mean, the work's already done, so it's just making sure.
Updating?
Updating and having change, so, yeah, that's, that's helping me out.
Cool, very cool, with conversations anyway.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you so very much. Already went through PNC, it looks like? All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay, open public hearing. Did you receive anything?
No.
Close, close public hearing. Okay, first, a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Patrick?
Yes.
How about?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
That's the first three.
Make a motion to dispense. Can we make a, a dispense with the second and third reading?
Okay.
Okay, so make a motion to dispense with the second and third reading.
Second.
Second, okay, Patrick?
Yes.
How about?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
16 is done, okay. Public force. Lisa?
We have some really neat things happening. Here at the library right now, um, if you have Facebook, you know that we have a sound pod that is a great place for people to come in, maybe do a job interview on Zoom and say, it's like a phone booth, but no Superman. That's a joke. It's, it's quiet in there, it's got ventilation, it has, um, light. It has, um, a table, a little table stand, we put a chair in. So we've already had a, a high schooler who's autistic who used it during a program we had last week. And worked great, as far as I know. It's also good for people that are applying for unemployment, social security, fighting with their tax man, which has all happened this spring. And the, the thing is, is they, when they use the public access computers, which is great, it's absolutely great. We have eight of them. They're yelling out their social security numbers, they're giving private information out. And I care that they don't have the privacy that they don't care about. But, um, it's a great thing. I'm excited that we have it in there. None of it has come through, um, my budget. We, we had a grant money, we've had memorial money, we've had some other people step up. But what I wanted to talk to you about was, um, oh, several months ago, do you remember Lynn Coltriter coming in? And we talked about the story walk. Well, um, I'm just kind of going to read this. We are having a grand opening for the story book walk, which is going to be out at the trail. What do you call it, the walking trail? And there will be 20 powder coated metal stands. It will have a locked, um, case where, and it's a, a tough, like Plexiglas. And then it will have a place for, um, two pages. We'll also have a spot for a QR code, so you can click on that, make sure you do that.
Yep.
Yeah, when you have your kids out there. And then it goes to our website, so we kind of have an idea, well, is this working? Are people interested in it? Anyway, so, um, 20 of them go around the park and Jim, um, who's not here, but he was there to talk with the, the gentleman building it, and then with Lynn, and everything's a go. I got the impression from Jim, it was a really fun, no, he wouldn't say fun.
Interesting.
Easy project to do, we agreed on everything. So that's been fabulous. But anyway, the grand opening is Monday, April 28th. Does that sound familiar? So you're coming out early, and we're doing that at 3 o'clock. And what am I forgetting? We're, we've just been doing a lot of things at the library, a lot of things. Today we have ISU Extension come and bring their worms. And we have 111 in today. It just keeps growing, keeps growing, so I love what I'm doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's working.
I was just wondering, on Belvedere's trailer, does the city own that, or did somebody buy that?
It's in the process. Dwayne's close to giving it to Louise. And he's gonna tear down the trailer. We already own the lot to the south, he's gonna build a brand new house.
Because we're getting creatures.
Yeah. It's, it's close to being fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Been waiting patiently.
Hello, everybody. I have to write everything down because I will forget. I'm actually going to read off this paper. So this is to the Stewart City Council Utility Board and Stewart residents. My name is DeMarie Ha, and I have the privilege of serving as the event proponent at the St. Center here in Stewart. I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself, share the work I've been doing to improve the facility and support our community, and also address a recent concern that was brought to my attention. Over the last several years, my husband Dave and I have taken on full responsibility for the building's maintenance and care, both inside and out. From mowing and weeding during the summer months, to snow removal and repairs in the winter, we've done this ourselves because we care deeply about the St. Center and its role it plays in our community. The majority of the revenue generated from events is reinvested directly into the building in the form of maintenance, insurance costs, and necessary repairs. With rising insurance premiums and the costs associated with caring for a large aging structure, there's very little left behind beyond what is required to keep the building running safely and effectively. In addition to these reinvestments, I also cover, cover several ongoing expenses out of my own pocket. After every event, I wash the linens at home, which does increase my personal utility bills. We also use our own equipment and fuel to provide all lawn care and snow removal for the property. Services that are typically covered by the city and other municipal buildings, but not at the St. Center. These are costs we take on gladly because we want the property to reflect the pride we feel in a family in Stewart. So I have prioritized a list of improvements to help reduce energy usage and maintain the building's integrity. Some of these include replacing outdated light bulbs with energy efficient LEDs, purchasing and installing modern, energy-saving appliances, repairing and sealing windows and doors to improve insulation, rebuilding a damaged exterior wall and door that previously wouldn't close, and then beginning regular HVAC servicing, which had been neglected for several years prior to me taking over. These improvements have had a real and positive impact on utility use and overall building efficiency. The St. Center continues to grow as a regional destination. From weddings to reunions to community events and meetings, we work hard to welcome more people to Stewart and showcase what our town has to offer. These events directly benefit local businesses, from restaurants to lodging and retail, and generate tens of thousands of dollars each year for our local economy. Recently, I received a message from City Hall staff member Sarah Sofer regarding a complaint received from a city official about lights being left on overnight at the St. Center. The message, message suggested this could cause increases to the city's tax or utility rates, and also mentioned the misuse of free utilities. It's unclear whether these were the views of the official who made the complaint, the citizen, or Sarah herself. Regardless, I would like to take a moment to clarify a few points. To begin, the city of Stewart does generously provide electricity and water to the St. Center, and I am very grateful for that support. However, unlike all other city-owned buildings, the St. Center does not receive city-funded gas utilities or any city-paid maintenance, repair, or insurance support. Those costs, often significant, are entirely my responsibility. It is undeniable that the St. Center is one of, if not the most iconic building in Stewart. Many communities intentionally light their landmark buildings at night to attract attention and do civic pride. Our own city hall has exterior lighting that remains on throughout the night, and the digital message board at the four-way intersection is on 24/7, even though very few people see it overnight. I sincerely doubt that these examples increase the city's tax or utility rates, and to suggest that occasional interior lights at the St. Center would do the same seems a bit dramatic. The suggestion that I am misusing free utilities was extremely disappointing, disappointing. I take my role as caretaker of the St. Center seriously and work hard to ensure that every decision is made with efficiency, responsibility, and long-term sustainability in mind. Lights may be left on until late at night for many practical reasons. Events often run well into the evening, sometimes as late as 2:00 AM. And I'm frequently in the building cleaning, preparing for upcoming events, or addressing maintenance needs. We are also dealing with a persistent bat issue inside the building. I have had a bat specialist come over and he advised to keep the lights on during certain times, therefore reducing the droppings, damage, urine from the bats not wanting to come out during the day. Full removal of the bats was estimated, um, over $100,000, he said closer to $150,000. So using lighting has been a reasonable and affordable option. I truly care about this building and about being a responsible partner to the city. So if any member of the council, utility board, or citizen would like to tour the facility, see the improvements, or discuss future plans, I'd be happy to meet and talk further. My door is always open, which really is, my phone is always on. Thank you for your time, your support, and your ongoing dedication to the city of Stewart.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sarah, have, have you, uh, have, have you reached out and just got estimates on the lighting, everything that you just listed off there? The LED lights and upgrades and stuff like that?
Yeah, I've actually switched over, like, all of the light bulbs that are on the chandeliers and the can lights that I have, I switch over to LEDs. Up top in the big dome, um, I believe are tube light bulbs. So I can't get up there, it's 22 feet in the air, so I don't think too much. If those go out, I don't know what's gonna happen. But I have, um, I've replaced, there was a fridge that was hot hole, so I did replace that. And working on sealing, um, the stained glass windows and all the cracks that are in on the doors are pretty damaged from wear and tear over the years, which will, will go like that another day.
Wonder, um, and I'm just, just rattling off the tongue, I wonder if there's, um, a way that we could put in, like, a laundry room or something, or we could have washer dryer in there? Where, I, I don't expect you to take the linens home to use your own personal stuff. I had no idea you were doing that, and thank you for doing that, for however long you've been doing that. But I just wonder if there's something that, and maybe, um, maybe you and Dave can look at that to see if there might be a way that maybe Millers or somebody could come in and just install some plumbing, just so we can have that in there, maybe, just to do that, kind of.
Yeah, I mean, that would be amazing.
Yeah, and that's just some, maybe get some prices on that.
Sure.
Come back to us or something, and that, something we can revisit. And get some prices on everything that you just listed there, um, as well, just see what we can do. I'm not guaranteeing anything, I'm just, it's at least start of a conversation anyway. Do that, so, I guess if you didn't, though, Andre, I don't know who would.
I don't know, we're too far from Des Moines to have somebody pick it up and do it for me, so.
Yeah, see, I don't know how the other people that were in it.
I believe Brandon did the same thing, she's okay, I'm just watching, yeah.
We don't give you homes operation, because providing us a $70,000 a year, pay of money, but we have nothing to do with Russian, it's completely.
Minus the utility bill, but, yeah, the $15,000 is, is great help.
Yeah.
But it is an old building, and talking to Dave, the whole front stairs is getting shot now, and so, so eventually.
Those are something, yeah, well, both sides.
You can't say Sarah and Dave's got to pick up the cost on that. And like I say, I think that they did a wonderful job. So far, they hired Jim Rar to help with the door and everything at a cheaper price than others.
Oh, like, like, a lot.
And if that's the case, what Ash just said, you know, if we just give them a lot of amount or whatever, maybe we need to.
Yeah, we've been doing that each year, $30,000.
And, and that might be something, you know, if they're struggling or something, that we.
I just asked her to, when she's supposed to give me the financial.
So, um, with the, so I get the $30,000, and then obviously I'm paying on a bill for $15,000. My insurance just went from $1,000 a month to, part of it went to $3,600 every two months. So it's just about $30,000, or it's like $22,000 with just the light bulb, the building insurance.
Yeah, as we discussed, I think you are supposed to give me the financial statement for the whole year.
Yeah.
And based on what she gave you, something to the council, that's what we were trying to say. If there's extra costs and all these things, we'll be glad to look at it again and try to provide. I think that's coming up in August.
I do believe so, July, August.
And we discussed that a few months ago, and I asked you, when you submit your financial, annual, annual financial statement, just add all these things and give it to me, where I can bring it here to the council and look at it.
Sure.
Yeah, we have discussed it.
I'd love to bring it up.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
What brought this one up was, I came up to City Hall because I've had town people complaining to me about the lights being on, on all night. And Sarah and I talked just not very long ago tonight, and she said they're not on every night. I'm not up at 3, 4, 5 o'clock in the morning to check on that, and I'm not going to be. So I didn't have her number, so I had Sarah send her a text to let her know. And what it is, it's where some of the town people are complaining where the city's getting their water and electric for free. I've had them complain to me, so I told them I would check it out because I didn't know. So this is what brought it up. But now where she's saying that they do their own snowing, snow and stuff, can the city run up there and?
The city used to do the snow removal, when Greg was doing it.
To help them out.
They used to do it, it wasn't top on their priority, but they did it. But if Greg had an, is it Greg?
Greg, yeah.
If he had an event, he'd say, hey, can you plow it? We have a wedding, or we have blah, 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 and they did that.
I think he did have Schwinger doing some, like, mowing as well. But with the insurance cost, we just dropped all of that and just did it ourselves.
Yeah, but the city used to do it, Jim used to do it, because they had the controversy with the Guthrie County Clinic next door, and they were piling up and car parking and all that, and, yeah, that was a mess.
To me, I think it's amazing seeing the dome lights on it when there's an event going on. You can see it from miles out.
I like putting the colored lights on because then you have, kind of spooky and bright.
Well, hopefully you can get the finances page, which can help you out some more.
Yep, I'll work on that.
Sure, for that confusion, just take a lot of lights on at the city hall. If you get a complaint, you just pass it on, nothing goes wrong.
That's a way to put the LED lights in there, and that's cheap, LED lights are cheap.
And thank you for doing it.
I probably switched over 50 light bulbs and continue to do some, there's a lot in there, so.
Yeah, good work, good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget to give that financial statement.
Thank you.
Anybody else got anything? Farmers Electric had called and wanted to know if the city could send out notices since we passed the franchise fees. They don't think they're obligated to tell their customers there's franchise fees. And I said, yes, the city can send that. And then, I want to personally, are you listening, Barb?
I'm listening.
I want personally thank you for collecting all the pop cans for years and years. If everybody hasn't seen, we've got brand new purple picnic tables up there. That's a lot of work.
Good job.
$13,000, $13,000.
$13,000.
Bob's throwing the story on it.
And then, our town cleanup is the 25th and 26th. If any council people want to help on our side, or you want them to, with the FFA kids. And then Dave Doley and Molly Dolch and a lot of the staff at the city or at the school are involved in 9:00 to 11:30 on the 28th, is that right? There's probably being Dexter and Philster picking up trash, picking up tables, floors. The post staff from the South Lake Cemetery is painting trash cans, should be a disorgy, if it doesn't rain.
Yeah, Molly's, Molly's done a lot of work for it.